This is our Halloween meeting. Okay. It is 7:04. The board met in closed session at 6:00 PM to discuss matters that fall under the following categories that are exceptions to the Illinois Open Meeting Act. Legal matters, exception C-11. Student matters, exception C-9. Personal matters, exception C-1. Closed session, that's exception C-21. And property matters, exception C-5. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to go into open session.
Tell them move.
Motion by Mr. Riddle, second by Ms. Hannah. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Lenzing? Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. We are now in open session. Mr. Grimes, would you please do us the honor of leading us in the pledge of allegiance?
I don't know if I know how to do it, Mr. Riddle.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Okay, next item, president's report. Give me just a minute. Okay, we are in open session. I received an email on October 6th from Mr. Patrick Frund, and I'm going to read it to you. "My name is Patrick Frund," I hope I'm pronouncing the name right, "and I am one of the faculty advisors of the Miguel Juarez Middle School Student Council. As part of a recent lesson on civic engagement, students were asked to write a thoughtful letter to an elected official or school administrator on a topic that they are passionate about. Several letters were addressed to you, which will be delivered this week. These letters include an open invitation to come and speak with the group about these topics, as well as the importance of using your voice to make positive change in the world." They're also inviting me to attend one of their student council meetings, which I am planning to do. And I just wanted to read these letters to you. I got two letters, okay? They said there were a bunch of them. They're going to be delivered. I didn't get that delivery, but I did get two. And I'd like to read them to you. "Dear Waukegan School Board, Mr. Michael Rodriguez, my name is Kayla Rosillas, and I am in the 7th grade at Miguel Juarez in Waukegan. I am also a member of student council. I am writing to you today because of the school lunch. This issue affects students with allergies at my school. A lot of kids have allergies and can be allergic to fruit and dairy and gluten, and may have time to bring food to school, and it would be a better option to have more choices for kids with allergies and for the kids to have more options. I hope that you can help me and my school to find a solution to this problem in our community, and hope that you will consider bringing this to our Waukegan School Board. I would also like to invite you to come talk to council. We meet every other Thursday, our advisors are Mr. Patrick Frund and Ms. Mariel Nieves. I'll thank you very much for your attention to this issue." You can tell what's on that student's mind. Next one is from, says, "My name is Elizabeth Morales, and I am an 8th grader at Miguel Juarez Middle School in Waukegan, Illinois. I am also a member of student council. I'm writing to you today because I am concerned about the school lunches." Seems to be a certain theme here. "This is an issue that affects me, my schoolmates, and also parents who worry that their kids, what their kids eat. This is a problem because, well, for me, after eating something from school, it messes up my stomach. Also, many people don't like the lunches because there is barely any options. Other times, the food is too cold or it doesn't look edible. I believe that this issue is important because I hope you will consider bringing the issue to our school board. I would also like to invite you to come and talk to our student council." So anyway, I thought this was kind of interesting because there are two students. I don't know how many letters there were and how many different issues there were, but the two that I got were about the school lunches. It's just kind of coincidental that we are at this point also in the process of bidding out the school lunch program. So I don't know if the students are watching or if Mr. Frund is watching, but I told them that I would bring this issue to the school board, and I did. And I have another letter I would like to read. This is from ALAS, the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents. "Dear Ms. Placencia, on behalf of the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents, ALAS, it is with great enthusiasm that we congratulate you on your selection to the ALAS Board of Directors. Your leadership, dedication, and unwavering commitment to advancing equity and excellence in education exemplify the values and vision that define our organization. Your appointment represents not only recognition of your professional accomplishments, but also confidence in your ability to help guide ALAS into an exciting new chapter of growth and impact. As a member of the board, you will play a vital role in shaping initiatives that empower Latino leaders, strengthen our educational systems, and expand opportunities for students and communities we serve. We are excited about the energy, expertise, and perspective you bring to the board. Your voice will help drive innovation, collaboration, and advocacy at the national level, ensuring that ALAS continues to be a leading force for educational equity and leadership development. Together, we will advance our mission, amplify Latino leadership, and create lasting change in education. Next steps would include a swearing-in process, which we are presently working on. This will take place remotely with details to follow. Once again, congratulations on this well-deserved appointment. We look forward to your contributions, your partnership, and the collective progress we'll make together. Future is bright for ALAS and even brighter with you on the team. With warm regards and excitement, Dr. Alice Marrero, President, ALAS Board of Directors, Felicia Navarrete, Executive Director of ALAS." She didn't know I was going to read it. But Ms. Placencia, I just want to say we're really happy that you have received this honor. We want to thank you. You've brought a lot of honor and recognition to our district. Next one is a letter I received from the Illinois Association of School Boards. "As IASB's Executive Director, I want to inform you of an exciting strategic initiative and request your participation to make it successful. Beginning in July 2026, IASB will introduce a new member-driven strategic plan, and the foundation for that effort begins now. The new strategic plan is intended to drive measurable results utilizing a unified vision and actionable strategies that originate from local school board members. How can you help? The first step is to assess your IASB member needs. It's your association. What do you want from it? How can IASB better assist you in your local governance work? What challenges do you face as a board member? And how can IASB help you overcome these challenges? We want your honest opinion on what IASB can do better to serve you. Please take a few minutes to complete the 12-question survey. I also ask that you make sure the other members of your board are aware of this process." I don't know if any of you got letters? You didn't get letters? Okay, just one. I want, okay, I want to make sure. Okay, please make sure the other members of your board are aware of this process and take the time to respond to the survey. So if you didn't get the letter or if you can't find it, I have this letter here. I can get copies to you and give you the information. So next item, last item, is the fact that we are going to be meeting as a board on November 5th, a follow-up meeting to our meeting of board self-evaluation, which we did on September 16th with our representative from the Illinois Association of School Boards, Laura Martinez. We need a follow-up meeting because there were certain items that we wanted to continue to discuss and certain unfinished business. So we'll be meeting on November 5th, which I believe is a Wednesday. I think it's next Wednesday here at 6:00 PM. It's going to be in closed session per the Illinois Opens Meeting Act. That's board self-evaluation with an IASB representative is one of the allowable exceptions to the Illinois, to the open meetings act, the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Okay, I got that out. All right, next item, student board member report. We're going to let Ms. Helen go first. Is she here? Hi.
Hello, everyone. This is me and Frankie's student board report, but I will go first. Going to go to next slide. So on today's agenda, we have clubs and activity, lunch survey, student well-being survey, and goals. So first, we have clubs and events. This Thursday, the principal advisory is starting from 3:30 to 5:00 PM, where we will get insight from both the Washington campus and the AOC campus on how to better our campus. And then next, the Rising Line event is happening this Wednesday, oh, not this Wednesday, in November, on November 19th from 2000, sorry, November 19th, 2025, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Brookside Campus, where we will, there will be clubs and sports to like explain and try to get 8th graders to join their activities, which I like because from my past report, I talked about getting freshmen, like incoming freshmen, more involved. So I will be there with my club, the Future Healthcare Club, to try to like find more kids who are interested in the medical field to join. And then for the lunch survey, I started a lunch, well, I created a lunch survey with Ms. T., the head of the food department, and just to get the overall opinion of the students, like their opinion of the food and how it can be approved. The step to get my survey out is to talk to Ms. T. and try to get bulldog points, like add it to the survey, and then confirm with Dr. T. about the survey, create a QR code, and then stick them to the tables and announce them on the intercom before school starts. And yeah, thank you.
And next up, this is the status over the well-being survey. As you can see, I've only received 39 responses, which is not a lot, but lots of them are pretty much juniors. I've learned that this is really hard to get people to respond. Next slide, please. So after that, after what I've learned about trying to make this survey get answers, I'd like to propose a new district survey to oversee the district overall being on top of just the Washington and the Brookside campuses, since we represent the student body. So I would like to see this be answered, since we're, we represent the whole student body, and I want to get this out towards middle schools and elementary schools. And our goal is to get our peers' overall opinions about our school and how they would want to change it for the better. Thank you.
Great, great. Thank you very much.
Board President, can I make some comments?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll put it there or something. I just want to say I really appreciate incentivizing the surveys because I think sometimes our kids get overwhelmed with the amount of surveys that they do. So putting some sort of incentive on it is very helpful to encourage engagement. I would just want to encourage the board that if this information comes to our level or administrators, if it gets to your level, that we're listening to what the students are saying and doing something about it. Because I think that's the most we, to prove that we can get engagement from the kids, is like if we're actually listening and planning to do something, then they're like, okay, I will tell you. But if we have a pattern of just saying, okay, thanks for filling it out, and we're not moving things forward, there's going to be disengagement. That's just a personal observation.
Ms. Fabian?
And then I just had a question as well. I know you said you wanted to get down to the middle school levels. Are we going to bring back the student advisory, or the superintendent, sorry, advisory committee where we can have middle school representation and they can work with the board members on getting these things out? Here.
Yes, we will have a superintendent advisory committee. I'll circle back to the board on that. Ms. Fabian?
Okay, next item, special recognition and presentations of Waukegan School Foundation grants. Mr. Grimes?
Hello, community, board, staff. So today, we're here to present our foundation, Teacher Grants Awards, which we've been promoting. And actually, this year, we had over three times the submission over the past year. So I'm really excited to see that more teachers are filling this out. However, it made it more difficult for us to choose, and it took us a lot more time to go through. So I really do appreciate the patience that all of our teachers had. I kept getting emails like, did I win? Did I get it? So again, I appreciate your patience with us as we went through because there were so many innovative projects, and obviously, we have a limit, right? So today, we're going to acknowledge those winners, and we have eight of them. And I believe our total was $8,700 that we're going to give away in total prizes. And these are for items and projects that enhance the curriculum. These are supplemental, going above and beyond the school day. It could be during the school day, but some of them also had after-school programmings in there. So we have Erin Hansen with Extending the Tradition of Mariachi. If you're here, please come up and receive your award. Pass that on. And that was over at Waukegan High School. Jessica Chaddick with 5th grade mentor intervention. And they are going to use their 5th graders to help support. Oh, wait. Amina Said with the cardboard art project, and she will be serving Clark. Sorry? Oh, she's right. Thank you. So if you want to stay in the front, we're going to eventually take a picture with all of our fabulous winners. And I might butcher this name, so I apologize in advance. Brian Earhart for Botany. Thank you for extending that program. Congratulations. Thomas Stonis for Painting the Past and Using Paints to Explore U.S. History. Henry French is going to be doing broadcast network gear so that students can be creating their own broadcasting channel at the high school. I always love when I see student work. Neri Torres Anton for the Lego Vertical Garden. What school were you at again? What school, Miguel Juarez. Sorry, I didn't memorize all of them. And then Jason Blair with the camera bundle for the Yearbook Club and Journalism. So thank you at the high school as well. So congratulations. If the foundation would like to take a picture with everyone up front? Oh, okay, so our projects that are hanging out in front of the lobby are also from their same art teacher, Ms. Said, so thank you. So we expect more projects now. So my apologies, she did win. Apparently, we, we'll just hide the name on it. But yes, yours was the video podcast with the students, a regular podcast with the students. So at what school? Whittier. Thank you.
All right. Uh-oh, we got more.
Well, you're in the Lions Club. You know, that's not part of you, huh?
Great job, young man.
Hey, you guys did a great job.
It's a week-long experience. I'll tell you, I'll say this stuff after the meeting. Carroll University, which is just outside of Waukegan. It's in June, after school breaks out. And our Lions Club pays for scholarship, complete scholarship. It's a really fun event.
Okay, I just want to thank the Waukegan. These awards are like, it's seven. Next item, item eight, open session, everybody?
Yep.
I dedicate approval of the minute for the open session, number 23, 2025. All in attendance, review them. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabian? Okay, any comments, corrections, changes?
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Lenzing?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes. That's, okay. And can we get that back door closed, please? We're getting a lot of noise coming in from the hall. Thank you. Okay. Item nine, opportunity for public comment. Do we have a sign-up sheet? Thanks, Steve. Okay, when I call, your name, please come to the podium. You'll have three minutes. First name on the list is Randy Sobeki.
Good evening, everyone. So I just wanted to talk tonight about one of the things on the agenda.
things on the agenda tonight, which is under personnel. And that has to do with the general council's contract. Well, reading this, you see all the accomplishments and it says that general council saved the district all this money. But what about, how come it doesn't mention of how much it costs the district in settlements? That stuff should also be on here when we're evaluating our only two employees when these contracts comes up. This is stuff the community should know. Because we had a lot of high paying payouts within this district over those years. That did we really save the district money? No, we cost the district money. The taxpayers paid out a lot of settlements. That stuff should be on here. Mr. Vukovich says every, almost every meeting we come up here, that's one of her jobs to make sure these minutes are done on time to follow Illinois law, which are always late. That should also be on these evaluations. So how could they, they always get satisfactory, but we never tell the stuff that they've done wrong in those years. It's just all the positive stuff. When we, just like data, when we control the data, you can manipulate data, data to make it, to, to present it how you want it to show. And, and, and change things around. If, if we're going to be truly transparent, like we say, then let's be transparent. Let's put it all out there. And then my other thing at the last board meeting, when it was brought up about, uh, Lewis, the kitchen at Lewis, general council didn't even have an answer to that, to the question that was asked. You know, they, the general council should have did their homework and then they said they'll get it back to the board and voted on it. Well, that should come back to the community also because I'm interested in the, the outcome of that. Did it need to go out to bid? Did it not need to go out to bid? We didn't get an answer on that. I'm sure all you've done, have got that answer. But if this stuff is asked in a public meeting, in an open forum, then the answer should go to the public the same way. Cause it was asked at a public meeting. Not always we'll get back to the board with the answer. Those answers should also come back to the community. And it doesn't matter what board meeting we're at. We seem to see that a lot, but we don't have answers and those answers never come back to the community. We shouldn't have to FOIA everything and, and not just be brought back to the community. You guys at the next meeting can make a statement and let the community know what those answers were. Does it need to go out to bid? Does it not need to go out to bid? Or vice versa, for anything that is brought up at a board meeting and you guys don't have the answers. The information should not just come back to the board and that's it. Because a lot of people do show up, a lot of people watch online that are interested in, in, in those, in these meetings. And we'd like to know the answers and we're just left with nothing. Uh, that's all I got for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Sobeki. Brayon Edwards.
Good evening, boy. It's been a long time, right? And, uh, tonight I want to get up here and I want to say a few things. Cause I heard some of the letters that you read off, but I want to ask a question. Is the Latinos the only one in this community? Cause in that letter you said promote Latino leaders. I don't hear nothing else about nobody, no other leaders. It's, it's kind of getting redundant and it's offensive to this community because this community is not just Latinos. And this is what I'm fighting with in my community now. Why I can't get a lot of people that look like me to come, oh, join this fight with what's going on in my community as it relates to my brown people, which brings me to the topic. Cause we got a superintendent that's a Latino. And dear, I'm so disgusted that you haven't joined not one march we've had that I've seen. It's not good. You represent this district. How many Latinos is in this district? We pay you too much money for you not to be able to show up for the people that you represent. Too much money. And then we giving the lady a raise, a satisfactory. Rodriguez, you trash, cause you lied to me in my face. I want to say that to you. I came here tonight to tell you that you're trash for lying to me. Maybe you did that because it was a way to promote you as you was running. Cause oh, I'm gonna sit down and I'm gonna talk to you. Oh, we gonna have meetings, you know, but I, I got that at the time. I know that when y'all running for these positions, you'll sell your draws. I understand that because you need something from me. But once that need is met, we're obsolete. We non-existent. We're a non-factor. And in fact, I haven't even seen you out here marching for the Latino community, the ones you supposed to represent. What are we doing here? Exactly. And I'm saying to this board now, six explosions we've got to talk about, six. And we just is getting to a half a year. At some point we got to ask ourselves, something's not working. Do your board members take time to actually go talk to the boots on the ground? And in case any of y'all don't know what the boots on the ground is, that's those teachers that got to deal with the mess day in and day out, the different attitudes. The ones who don't get support, the ones who's often forgot about, the ones that don't make the big dollars. What are we doing? Because in 10 years, we seem to have to, we seem to have not moved from one square to the next. But what I've noticed in 10 years, everybody's still getting raises on this administration. There's a hot hell. You hear me? Hell is hot as hell, y'all. You questions?
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Okay. Next item on the agenda, consent agenda, academics. The consent agenda is an agenda of items that are being voted on tonight. And, uh, th- this is the academic area. And these are all items that have been, uh, presented to the board. Board has had a chance to discuss them and review them. They are considered non-controversial. And rather than take each one and spend a lot of time on each one, we are going to, uh, vote for them all, uh, as one item. Unless any of the board members would like to request that any of the items be separated out for a separate vote.
Yes.
Okay. So.
Yes.
Ms. Lenzing.
Um, I would like to separate out 10I and 10K.
10I and 10K. Ms. Hannah?
I'd like to separate, um, um, F, G, H. Just hold on. And you got.
Are you wanting all of the professional development?
Absolutely.
Okay. So that's going to be F through, I believe, K?
F through K.
Someone double checking on that?
Look at J.
Are we taking each one individually or do you guys want to lump them together?
No, they can all be taken together at one vote.
Okay. So you want to separate out.
E, F, G.
E also?
Are you okay with that?
Yes. E, well, no, wait. F, G, H, I, J, K. Well, I'm gonna add E, cause I got that, that.
You're gonna add E. Okay.
So.
Did you want these all voted on as one item or do you want?
You can, one item.
Board President, can we do E, F, G, H, J together?
Okay.
And then I and K together?
E, F, G, H and K?
H, H and J.
H and J.
Mm-hmm. So.
E, F, G, H and J. Okay.
So through that run, I and K will be separated and then the rest will be in one group. I and K, I'm fine with together.
Okay. And E, F, G, H and J together?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Then what I'm looking for is a motion to approve the consent agenda, item 10, 10A through X, with the exception of items E, F, G, H, I, J and K. Is that correct? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Riddle.
Second.
Second by Mr. McBride. Any discussion on that motion? And we have a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Lenzing?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez? Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay. Then the next, uh, motion I'd like to ask for, the motion to approve items I and K together. Item I is Greenwood School Blue Ribbon Professional Development Request and K is High Reliability School Summit. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Can we have a motion?
Motion to approve. I and K.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabian. Any discussion on that motion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah? Ms. Lenzing?
No.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes. Motion carries. Next, next motion I would, I'm asking for is a motion to approve items E, F, G, H and J. Now I, I'm, you know what? Let me just read the ones that were separated, okay?
And K.
Just so we know what we voted on. Vote on I and K, which are one Greenwood School Blue Ribbon Professional Development Request. And K is a High Reliability School Summit. That was the one that was just, just approved. The next grouping includes item E, which is attendance at the Association for Career and Technical Education Vision Act, December 8th through 12th, 25. F is Whittier Elementary School, December, um, that's what's the?
IB, yeah.
IB Professional Development Request. Um, G is Whittier Elementary School, March IB Professional Development Request. Uh, H is North School Ron Clark Professional Development Request. And J is Washington Elementary School, NABE Professional Development Request. Did I get those all right?
Yes. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Riddle. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McBride.
We did I and K.
Got it.
We did I and K already.
Are you asking for a commentary?
So, so.
Is there any discussion on the whole motion? You already have motion second by Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yes. I have, I have a,
Ms. Hannah?
Okay. Um, I am all for continuing education for our staff. Um, however, we really have reason to deny all of the future professional development because we have, uh, financial uncertainties because of our federal government. And, um, we need to find a balanced approach to professional development. And while it is important, we need to, um, uh, a temporary reduction or assessment of its necessity, given the current financial, um, uncertainty. And, um, and so that's how come, um, I will be, I cannot support these professional developments going forward. Because, um, I have talked about reducing spending and this was one area that, um, that we need to reconsider and reassess, uh, the actual necessity of this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Ms. Lenzing?
Um, I completely understand, uh, Ms. Hannah, your sentiments and it, it is difficult with the current, uh, federal administration that we have to factor in this, uh, component with our decisions. I'm going to be voting yes because these items have been budgeted for. And for that reason, I want to make sure that we as a board are upholding the budget that we agreed to. Aside my personal opinions on the I and K that I denied. Um, if it has been budgeted for, whether it's professional development, whether it's furniture for the schools, et cetera, that's gone under the review process with Ms. Polk. And I believe if you have it in your budget, you should have access to those funds to fulfill your budget. So that is why I will be saying yes to this.
Thank you, Ms. Lenzing. Ms. Fabian?
Ms. Lenzing said, one of my points, and I, I agree if it's already been budgeted for. However, Ms. Hannah has a point. We do have to start looking at how we're spending. And so what really has been bothering me is that some of these conferences are annual. I understand the newer ones where like we're starting IB schools, Ron Clark, all that. But something like NABE where the same person has been going every year, you know, it's coming annually. It's been budgeted for specifically for that conference. When we wait, we miss out on the reduced costs. So, um, I think Ms. Lenzing for bringing up, I saw it for 13, I think, what was the original ask? Then they updated the ask for the, um, they updated the, the ask for NABE. They reduced it down. However, it was down to 450 up to, yeah, so they were asking $1,330 for conference fees. When the conference itself is around seven and we could have only paid, uh, 495 up until last week, or two weeks ago. So that is my frustration because again, these are annual. You know, you're going to them because you specifically budgeted for them. Why are we waiting to the nth hour of when that early bird rate expires to then, um, apply for these conferences?
Thank you, Ms. Fabian.
Mr. Rodriguez, I forgot. And, um, that, my other part. And I have said it before, and I will continue to say it, that, um, that, um, based on, based on awful text that I got, and I will share it with, um, with the board president and the superintendent. Um, the, uh, we are, we are educating more adults to their excellence than we are our children. I received a text message, um, and it was a, a paper that was written by an eighth grader getting ready to go to ninth grade. It was totally illegible. You, it, it, this, this paper was, could have been written by a first grader. And from what I'm understanding, as I looked into it further, that this is the norm of our student that we're producing. So in terms of professional development, monies being spent, we need to invest though that money into teaching our children how to read, to write, to do math. And, oh, we're going, the, the, um, the, uh, adults are going to the professional developments to help the students. Well, you know what? It hasn't been worth it. Not from what, not from what I received as a paper at, from a, um, from a teacher. And this is the norm. It's the norm.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Any, uh, further discuss, oh, Ms. Lenzing?
Um, I'm just, hmm, I'm gonna be a broken record. So years ago, we had a, yeah, we had as a board come to a consensus to get information as to the impact of administrative conferences on district and student achievement. We have never received that. And in my opinion, there's never been accountability for that. But this again, just highlights the importance of circling back to say, we went to this conference. This is what we gained. This is how we intend to use it in the district. Because it then starts to reduce the question of, is this impactful for Waukegan students? Is this making a difference for our academics? Is it making a difference for their social, emotional learning? For their athletics, like all, what it takes for a kid to go through our school system and be successful is primarily reading and writing, but those other components as well. So if we are being proactive, communicating how it's going to impact and benefit the district, once we come back, it starts to reduce concerns about investing in this PD.
Thank you, Ms. Lenzing. Any further comments or questions on this motion? We have a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
No.
Ms. Lenzing?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay. Um, before we move on, we approved the consent agenda and I'm going to read the items into the record. Items that were on the main consent agenda that we voted on the first, uh, vote. Um, items that were on the main consent agenda that we voted on the first, uh, vote. A, ten A is Amendment for Arbiter Referee Services. Ten B, Renewal of Star's Twenty First Century External E evaluator. C is Amira Learning Extension for K through five. D is Renewal of Fall Destiny Library and Textbook Inventory System. L is Renewal of Panopto. Um, M Renewal of Aruba Clear Pass Wi-Fi License. N Renewal of Blue Level DDoS Protection. Um, O is Renewal of Smart Sheets Project Management Tool. D is Renewal of Alvic, um, Network Monitoring. Q Renewal of Palo Alto Firewall Maintenance. R Renewal of Cisco SmartNet. S Renewal of Security Web Filtering for Students. T Purchase of Security Keys for the Two-Factor Authentication, UFA Cybersecurity Project. U Renewal of Incident IQ Help Desk Contract and New HR Mod, Module Purchase. V Purchase of Interactive Projectors for Classrooms. W Renewal of Tyler Technologies, Eye Visions. And X Renewal of DocuSign. Well, those were all approved in the first grouping, the, um, the, uh, Consent Agenda vote. Okay, moving on, item eleven, Consent Agenda for Operations. We have three items on here. One, once again, the Consent Agenda, these items were all presented to the board before a board has had a chance to review them, discuss them, ask questions. And they're being presented as a Consent Agenda item, which we will vote, all, vote on altogether unless any of the board members have any reason for wanting to separate them out. And what they are, there are only three items. Eleven A is Approval of Crisis Prevention Institute Instructor Certification and Renewal. B Approval of Syntest Uniform Rental Agreement for Operations Department Personnel, Custodial Maintenance. And C Approval of Mcel Twenty Twenty Five National Convening Attendance.
Motion to approve.
Separate C.
Okay, now I was just gonna ask if there are any requests to separate items. Ms. Hannah is asking that we separate out item C. Any other requests to separate out items? Okay, then what I'm asking for is a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, items eleven A and B.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Mr. Riddle?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabian. Any discussion on this motion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Lenzing?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, item eleven C, the approval of Mcel Twenty Twenty Five National Convening Attendance. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Riddle?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabian. Any discussion on this motion?
This is, uh, this is, uh, continuation of the reason why I am, um, not approving any professional development.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Anything further? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
No.
Ms. Lenzing?
No.
Mr. McBride?
Yes, but I'd like to make a comment though, uh, to Ms. Hannah's point. Uh, we got a lot of things that's facing us. Families are not gonna be getting link cards. I remember COVID, we had to help. And I also would like to, uh, what, put a face on the amount of money that we're spending for, for conference. Where we all can really see the big picture, because right now it's a little bit at a time. But it seems like every board meeting, we, somebody's going, so. Let's look at the big picture, see how much money we're spending. Then maybe there, maybe we all might take a look at it then.
That's right.
We see the amount. Right now it looks like it's two dollars, but when we see a hundred thousand, we might see something different.
So are you asking Mr. McBride for a total of grand total?
It would be nice if we could see that.
Of professional development? I agree.
See that, yeah.
Can we?
I second that.
Can we also add to that what funds are being used? If it's site-based budgeting or if we're using title funds, et cetera?
Or local fund?
Can we get that information? Board, thank you.
Could, could we add to that too, some of the conferences that are required? You know, that, I mean, PD is required, though, by the state. So some of these conferences that people go to, they have to get this training either in-house or out of house. So, I mean, eh, so maybe that could be something put in there too. How much training PD, professional PD is needed by these individuals? Yes, to keep their teaching license.
Thank you, Mr. Riddle. Okay, we have.
That shouldn't be done on the, uh, that should not be done on the taxpayers' money to keep up their, um, licensure.
Well, it's mandated.
Yeah.
You know, you have to have somebody take their place when you, when they go into training. That you can't just leave the classroom, you know, empty, so.
Well, I'd like to see that as well, Mr. Riddle. Because grants, grants are usually where the professional development is, um, mandated. Grants.
Well, okay, okay, I, I don't, you know, some of these stuff, for instance, to keep the IB designation, it's required that, that teachers get so much training.
I think we can discuss when we see the actual data.
Yeah, when we see the data.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, now, do, we have a motion, a second?
We're in the middle of voting. Mr. Riddle's next.
We're in the middle of a roll call. Yes, we are, because Mr. McBride made the comment with his vote.
That's right, he did.
Okay.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, wanna keep that straight. Item twelve, Purchases and Contracts, I see none. Item thirteen, Personnel Item.
Or are we doing these one by one because they're not consent?
Yes, this is not consent. Ready?
Okay. It is a recommendation at the Board of Education, authorized Superintendent or her designee to approve for McCall School Staff to Attend the Twenty-Sixth Annual Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence Conference in Orlando, Florida from December first through the fourth, twenty twenty-five, and an estimated total cost of nine thousand two hundred forty-two dollars and ninety-six cents, which includes registration, lodging, travel, and mill per diem rate.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Riddle?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabian. Any discussion on this motion?
Yes, um, yeah, I am, I am, um, sad that I am going to vote no for this. Uh, even though I have not seen any staff, uh, from McCall bring forth a, um, a professional development request before. Uh, but just so that I am consistent, um, I will be, um, voting no, um, for this.
Ms. Fabian?
And I just wanna remind the public that when we're talking about the Blue Ribbon Schools, this is one of those programs that were cut by the federal administration and has been brought down, um, by the state. So again, when we're talking about education, unfortunately, politics plays a big part of it. Um, and so I'm hoping that I, that more of our families start getting engaged. Um, because for this year, we have Blue Ribbon Schools from the state. In future years, who knows? And this is, um, a program that's been going on for quite some time. Um, and McCall won previously, so I hope to see them hopefully win soon again.
Any further discussion on this motion?
I'd like to know about the per diem and how they're being calculated.
So every state has a per diem. Um, and so, Mr. Alajakas, did you get that out to the board? I know we talked about it in Zach. It may not have gone out yet, but I know you're working on something. Can you please grab a microphone, please?
Good, good evening, everyone. So the board will be getting more information on this. So per diems, the way they work is one of two ways. Um, the GSA, the government, I don't know what GSA stands for.
Services Administration.
There we go, thank you. Um, sets the per diem rates. And so when you go on a trip, there's two things that you look at. There's the meals and the incidentals, which combine for sort of like your daily per diem allotment, not counting the hotel rate. And every city has a different per diem rate. So if you're gonna go to New York City and you're gonna stay in Manhattan, you're gonna get a different rate than if you go to Boise, Idaho. And that is how the per diem rate is set, uh, domestically. And that's what we look at. And ho, hotel rates are a different thing based on the city, again, based on the time of year, right? You're trying to go to Orlando in the winter, it's gonna be more expensive in Orlando in the summer. There's a lot that goes into it. So the GSA sets all that. And our school districts and other government organizations follow what that per diem rate is. So if someone is going somewhere and they know the daily rate is ninety-two dollars, they're going for five days, that's gonna be calculated into the estimated cost. Obviously, we know, uh, for that per diem to be, you know, received, you have to give the receipts and everything that the finance office has in place. For international travel, that is set by the State Department. So the Department of State sets that per diem internationally, should we have any international trips. And it works similarly, different cities. Uh, Tokyo, for instance, is gonna be more expensive than, um, I'm not gonna get myself in trouble and think of low-income cities here, but that's the point.
Um, and so, um, is, i- is our, um, finance, finance office department calculating the per diems? Or are they being, um, calculated by department heads or what have you? And not going through finance?
On their professional development forum, staff are expected to calculate the per diems. And obviously, Ms. Polk's team does double-check everything that's coming in. Um, when you're asking for the reimbursements and, and whatnot to ensure that the proper per diem rates are being followed and that the prop, all our, you know, checks and balances are in place.
When it comes to the Board of Education, the Finance Department, Ms. Polk, if I'm, Ms. speaking, please correct me, looks at the per diem rate and assigns it.
And can I add, your days of travel are also less. So the day you travel in and travel out should be a less per diem than the days that you're actually there.
Ms. Ms. Fabian's correct, yes. Your first and final days of travel will be slightly smaller per diem rates than the days that you're fully, um, out of town.
Yeah, that.
Thank you.
Mr. Alajakas, can I ask one other question? So is it correct then that the per diem rate that we see here isn't necessarily paid to the employee? They bring back receipts showing whether or not they?
We all do.
Actually incurred those expenses, so the per.
That's correct. The per diem rate is what your allowance would be.
Right.
So your per diem rate is telling you, you could spend X amount of dollars on meals and incidentals if you are providing the receipts and those receipts are allowable expenses.
I also want to add that those need to be itemized receipts and not just overall receipts.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, any further discussion on the motion? If not, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
We're on the professional development, thirteen A.
Yeah. I'm a pass.
Ms. Lenzing?
No.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Item thirteen B Personnel, ten twenty-eight twenty-five.
It is a recommendation at the Board of Education, accept the administration's recommendations to approve the appointments, retirements, and accept the resignations and terminations as found on schedules F one zero zero two, L nine four nine, T three one seven, and G six six zero.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Riddle to approve.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Do we have any discussion on the motion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Lenzing?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Item thirteen C, Amendment Number Two to the General Counsel's Contract.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve and authorize the Board President to execute Amendment Number Two to the General Counsel's Contract.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Riddle?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabian. Discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
I truly have some reservations and, um, I have some, um, let me just make my statement here. Um, as far as a general counsel satisfactory or better perform for the school years twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five, I, I'm going to say that the mismanagement of legal obligations, consistently missing legal deadlines, such as for fi, the Freedom of Information requests, which jeopardizes the district's compliance with the law, the failure to provide the school board with all necessary information to make informed decisions, particularly on employee matters, leading to uninformed approvals, the lack of transparency and integrity, did not disclose her ongoing employment with an outside law firm for years, and improperly engaged the firm, causing unnecessary legal expenses for the district, procure, procurement irregularities, authorized a substantial three hundred thousand dollar contract project without adhering to requiring, required bid, bidding process, violating standard procedures, and risking local, um, risking the, uh, local, um, wait a minute. Risking financial mismanagement and adversarial treatment of staff, approaches the district management with a prosecute, a prosecuting, uh, mindset, creating an environment that feels more like a criminal court than a supportive educational institution. Legal missteps with serious consequences. Her approval led to the improper removal of a student, resulting in a lawsuit against the district. She failed to clarify her role in prolonging this litigation unnecessarily. The mishandling of student removal case directly affected Ms. Hannah, resulting in prolonged legal battles in both federal and state courts. And given these significant issues, the general counsel, in my, uh, my opinion, it does not merit a satisfactory performance evaluation or an extension to her contract. Thank you.
Okay, um, first of all, I would like to explain that this amendment to the General Counsel's Contract is something that the board has to do to catch up for failure to perform over the last four years. The board was supposed to have, uh, performed an annual evaluation of general counsel each year for the last four years, but did not. Okay? Because of that, the contract states that any time that the, uh, evaluation is not done, but the general counsel has continued to be employed, this is considered to be because of satisfactory performance. So this is strictly following the contract, which the board has committed to. So we are in a position now where because of the inaction of the board, the board has to, uh, agree that general counsel's performance was satisfactory or better. Okay? Secondly, um, all of the items that we're discussing right now are personnel matters, which should be discussed by the board. The general counsel is our employee. These matters should be discussed in closed session since we are dealing with employee performance. So, uh, that is what we are voting on. And we, the board kinda got themselves in a situation by not, um, doing what they were required to do and do the annual evaluation. Ms. Fabian?
Ms. Lenzing had her hand up.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Lenzing?
Um, my comment is surrounding number two within Amendment Two. And that's what you had touched on, Board President. When the board fails to do its job, it is, I cannot get behind holding someone accountable. We have to do our job first.
Absolutely.
I am a hundred percent, in order for us to do our job, we need to be given factual information. If you give me the information of what's really going on, we can figure it out. I don't like to be lied to by my kids. I don't like to be lied to by adults. So I'm not saying that's happening here. So, I'm not saying that's happening here, but I'm just saying, if we are going to do our job, we have to have the information and we have to be mindful and respectful of people's time. The fact that it didn't happen in 2022, didn't happen in 2023, didn't happen in 2024, didn't happen in 2025, that's on us. So, by approving this, we are taking accountability for not doing our job. Accountability does not just apply to our employees, it implies to ourselves, it implies to the entire staff of this district, it also applies to our students and our parents. It's a shared responsibility. So, this, if we didn't like what was going on, we should have prioritized the review. So, I am going to be voting yes because that's the right thing to do because I can't hold someone accountable for something that we haven't previously discussed. I understand there are mixed feelings. To Board President's point, that's closed session material, so I'm not going to comment on that. But that is the rationale behind my yes vote for this item tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Lenzing. Ms. Fabian?
So, Ms. Lenzing and yourself already touched upon the fact that we can't hold someone accountable if we don't hold ourselves accountable. So, that was on us. But I also want to clarify, when you're reading the action item, it's for years 22 to 25. This is not an extension of her contract. FY '25 ended June 30th. So, this is backdating and backtracking, and if you look, there are discussions going on to extend that contract. So, this is not an extension, and we will have the opportunity to now hold ourselves accountable and properly evaluate. And I understand all of the, the details are closed session, but I want to apologize because I think that every staff member should and does deserve feedback on their work. You can't grow, you can't get better unless you have that feedback. So, I want to formally also apologize to Ms. Vanderbroek for not following up and doing our due diligence and allowing you that opportunity to receive that proper feedback.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fabian.
Well, I have, year 2022, '23, a number of the Board members weren't here.
Right.
And so, and so, I understand what you all are saying, okay? However, I've been here through all that, and I asked the prior Board President about evaluations for legal counsel. It never happened. So, I attempted to be accountable, but
It's a group effort.
Right, okay? And all through those '22 through '25, okay? It is, you say it is personnel matters? Well, people have been talking about it in public. They've talked about it at many meetings, different issues. And so, so as far as personnel matters, okay, then, look, they've been, tried to be discussed, but they never were.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
No.
Ms. Lenzing?
For reasons mentioned.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Item 14 Grants and Donations, I see none, 15 other, nothing under that, 16 Financial Reports, Ratification of the Second Processing of October 2025 Board Bills, Manual Check Request Payments, and Old National Bank Insurance Payments for the period October 8, 2025, to October 21, 2025. Superintendent?
It is a recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education ratify the second October 2025 of Board Bills, Manual Check Request Payments, and Old National Bank Insurance Payments for the period of October 8, 2025 through October 21, 2025. The accounts payable Board payments for the period of October 8, 2025 through October 21, 2025, total $2,650,742.99. The Manual Check Request Payments for the period of October 8, 2025 through October 21, 2025, total $639,849.19. The Old National Bank Insurance Payment for the period of October 8, 2025 through October 21, 2025, total $1,946,069.29.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Riddle.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Any discussion on this motion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
No.
Ms. Lenzing?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Okay. Reports and presentations, do we have any committee reports?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
The Wellness Committee met on the 23rd. Mr. Riddle was there with me, and, Ms. Riddle, you're gonna have to help me here. We talked about
You want me to run through some of the things?
Yes, would you please?
Okay, well, we actually surveyed what had, what we had, some of the items we had discussed last year. We talked about the Anxious Generation book that we were reading, we talked about the cellphone policy, the new cellphone policy, the food program, we talked about boys and girls' clubs, and how was that working with their, after school lunches now or meals? We talked about caffeinated drinks, and it was mentioned by the nurse that pre and probiotic sodas are now available out on the market, and they wanted, he was gonna check to see if any of those were in any of our machines. We talked about the vaping problem, and is that still continuing? We talked about the water filters in our schools and wondered if the water filters were ever being checked, and filters, if they had filters in them, were those being changed? There was an awful lot of discussion. Two items kind of rose to the top, and those were the concerns of the health, of the Wellness Committee about the continuous vaping problem, and is it even getting worse? What actions should we be taking? What action is the school taking?
Right.
And then this cellphone policy, that is a new policy, and we wondered whether, you know, how that was working out. Schools are trying different things, whether the solution that we were working on was having some effect on the difficulties that were being faced in implementing such a program. So, the committee really didn't have an opportunity to delve into anything. Oh, we talked about with the vaping too, whether the, you brought up the fact, were the Health Department posters ready?
Right.
Something started last year.
Right.
So, there was a lot discussed. We're gonna have another meeting, so
And if we could ask, on behalf of the Wellness Committee, if we could get some kind of report regarding the water fountain
Mm-hmm.
Filters, and when are they being changed? How often are they being changed? And also, we talked about kids with like allergies?
That's right.
And if there was, should we be talking about getting some type of bracelets to identify the student's allergies, you know, that they would be able to have on them all the time? And we talked about the ability for students to get glasses for free
Yes.
Through the Lions Club?
Right.
And, yeah. And I think there was some talk about teaching the kids about reading the labels on nutrition
On food, sugar, foods, yes. So, there was a whole lot of stuff discussed.
We talked about a lot.
Basically, a lot of things were discussed, and, you know, we, as Ms. Hannah suggested, you know, some of the things that we were still very concerned about was vaping and whether monies that we were receiving now from the lawsuit could be used to
Airmark.
Educate.
Airmark it.
Yes, for some of it, for anti-vaping efforts and education in our schools. So, those, yeah, a lot of, a lot of things were happening. But we'll have another meeting, we'll see where the club wants, or the committee wants to focus on.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Lenzing?
I unfortunately don't have a committee report. I have more of a formal apology to my committee heads. I've had several obstacles come up during the time, so I haven't been able to attend. But things are calming down, so I'm excited to attend my first meeting and the next coming.
Thank you, Ms. Lenzing.
Just a formal apology.
Any other committee reports?
Well, I'm waiting on the Capital Improvement Committee to call a meeting.
Okay, thank you. Delegate reports?
Well, Mr. Rodriguez spoke about the survey
Yes.
That ISB is
Not ISB, IASB.
The IASB is sending out, and if you all, I'm sure you all received the email. And so, if you all could act upon that and get it back to the sender for that, and we are getting prepared to go in November to our II conference, and the Delegate Assembly will be convening, and the resolutions are out, and if you all could look at them and have a consensus of what you all want me to support
Mm-hmm.
Or not. And so, if you guys could get that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Superintendent's report?
At this time, I am We were gonna run through the strategic plan, so at this time, I will just, we'll give an update on our strategic plan. I was gonna hold it because we do have to return to closed session. So, I'll defer to the Board. Do you, would you like me to present it tonight, or would you like me to hold it and I can bring it back as student achievement? My personal, well, my, whoa, okay.
Yeah, I'd rather student achievement because it also gives opportunity to public comment.
Right.
You would rather do what?
Student achievement because then it gives opportunity for public comment as well, and they should be also looking at the strategic plan.
Is that the consensus of the Board? Yep. So, we will defer tonight, and we will wait for the following student achievement meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Information items, 18, FOIA reports, September 2025.
Reflects the FOIA activity for the prior month.
Thank you. 19, old business, is there any old business? 20, new business, is there any new business? 21, student discipline matters.
Board President, you want me to read the first one on expulsion proceeding, student number 790?
Yes, please. Are we, are we, were we gonna handle these all at
Maybe we can do the others together, but this one was, was the newest one?
Oh, I'll need one separated out.
Okay, we're discussing whether we should handle these all at once as a consent agenda, or if we need to separate any of them out, or all of them.
So, the first one is an expulsion hearing. The remainders were all modified expulsion requests?
Yes.
It is up to the Board if you want to take them all as a consent agenda, or take the first one on its own.
I think we were thinking of taking the first one separately, isn't that correct? That's an actual expulsion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then let's, let's do that. Mr. Riddle, please.
So, I have that one here. So, this is, whereas the Board of Education of the Waukegan Community Unit School District 60 did through its hearing officer on September 25th tonight, hold a hearing concerning, oh, that was on, sorry, hearing officer on September 25th, held a hearing concerning possible expulsion of student number 790, and receive and review the resulting hearing report. And whereas the evidence taken at said hearing report shows that the student has been found to have committed the act of weapons, firearms, handgun, Level 2 offense, which is in violation of the rules and regulations of this school district and the school code of Illinois. And whereas other available and appropriate behavior interventions and/or discipline were offered and/or provided to student number 790 and have now been exhausted. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that, one, whereas clauses are adopted herein by reference as findings of the Board, the whereas clauses are adopted, and, two, the Board additionally finds that it is in the best interest of the district to remove student 790 from the educational environment at this time because the student's continuing presence in school would substantially disrupt, impede, or interfere with the operation of the school. The severity of the infraction demonstrates that the student's continuing presence threatens school staff and students. Number three, student number 790 is expelled, held in abeyance, effective October 28, 2025, from attendance at said community's school district, unit School District 60, Waukegan Public Schools, for the remainder of the '25-'26 school year and the '26-'27 school year, with the opportunity to reinstate at the end of the school year '26-'27, based on successful completion of an alternative placement with a regional loss of education, the duration being warranted on the basis of the severity of the act, weapons, firearms, handgun, Level 2. Four, student number 790 additionally is prohibited from being on school grounds or district property, or participating in or attending school activities for the duration of the period of the expulsion, absent specific written permission of the building principal where the activity or event is to take place for good causes determined by the principal in consultation with the Director of Student Outreach or his designate. Number five, the expulsion will be stayed to permit the assignment of student number 790 to an alternative placement with attendance, academic, and behavioral conditions as recommended by the administration, provided student number 790 is accepted by the alternative placement. Number six, student is also to be referred for a special education evaluation, subject to parental consent, and if found eligible following evaluation, procedure safeguards of the Individuals with Disabilities Act will apply. And I so move that we approve this resolution.
Motion by Mr. Riddle to approve the resolution?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabian. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Lenzing?
Where to start?
Yeah. So, with this situation, the information that we were provided, I personally am concerned on a multitude of facets, meaning in many ways. Ultimately, safety is first. And so, I agree with the recommendation that this student is not fit to attend our schools at this present moment. I do appreciate the last whereas clause because based on my perspective and my understanding of child development, there is something that needs to be in place that was not previously supported. So, I'm hoping that we can get this individual the supports that they need through that evaluation. So, I know we can't require our parents to do that, but I strongly recommend it because there are many markers or indicators to which this individual needs some additional support. So, unfortunately, I will be voting yes. It's never a good experience to have to expel one of our students in this district, but when that line of safety is so egregiously crossed, it has to be done.
Thank you, Ms. Lenzing. Ms. Fabian?
Again, I'm glad that we added the amendment Number Six in order to have the student assessed. I really hope that the parents are watching and agree to this amendment because that is only done with your permission, and it's something that I fully support for the same reasons that Ms. Lenzing has stated. So, if the parents are out there and if they're not, I hope that our administration does the proper job in fully explaining what Procedure Number Six is and what those assessments are and what those procedural safeguards are in order to really support this student because these matters are not Because these matters are not taken lightly. No one feels good pushing any student out. However, safety is our priority. Um, and in this moment, we have to ensure that we're protecting the other staff and students and community. Um, so it is because of safety that we need to push the student out. But when a child is still a child, we also, as adults, need to do what we need to do in order to ensure that we give them proper support and resources so that they can grow into adults who can really fit into our society and contribute, um, their best.
Thank you, Ms. Fabian. Any further discussion on the motion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah? Ms. Lunsing?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, the next five items are, um, these are students that, um, were suspended. None of them is up for expulsion. They've all served their time. They're all back in school. And, um, what is the motion? Do you have that, Superintendent?
So are we doing?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because if we're doing consent, I would like to pull one out.
Okay, we can do that. Give me a minute. I have to find a document that I didn't realize I had. Okay. Which one did you want to pull up?
Um, I would like to pull out D. For student number one four seven, ending three.
D, okay. Who would like to make the motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Oh, wait, here it is.
Oh, you got it.
Is this how we're gonna do this?
If we can pause. So, um, the last time we did multiple expulsion modifications at one time, the Board President established the basis for taking it as a consent, identifying each of the students and what the modified expulsion request was, so that the public was aware of it, then asked for the motion, as long as nobody wanted to pull one. And that is the narrative that I, um, had handed to him and suggested he follow, after which the motion then would be made.
Okay, then let me read the document then because it's all here. And we are gonna, out of this, we're gonna, we have five items. We're gonna pull item D and, um, handle that separately. And if it's okay, we'll, uh, vote on the other four together.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, we are now at student discipline. The board met in closed session and individually considered each of the student matters listed here. They all address mandatory expulsion referrals for a weapons offense involving either possession or possession and use as required under section ten dash twenty two point six D of the school code. This provision of the law also allows for modification of the expulsion period by the superintendent, whose decision may be modified by the board. Items A through E were recommended by the respective building principals for modification of the minimum one-year expulsion period to varying lengths of time of suspension and other corrective action as follows. A, student number four fifty five expulsion modification to one day in-school suspension and an individualized safety plan. B, student number three seventy.
Can, well. So we need to clarify because it's within that document, we've added expulsion A to the top of the list. So while Board, I understand, I'm just. We're, we're clarifying that we are not tying it to the agenda letter, but it's in the document letter. That's what I'm saying.
This, this is not, not the same list that is in the agenda.
Correct. Yes, that's what we're clarifying.
Yep.
So item A in this list is not item A in the agenda.
It's B.
It's actually B.
B.
Right.
For clarification.
It will say the student numbers.
Okay, then I'll tell you what. I'm gonna change these so that everybody is clear.
Right.
All right. Student B.
Better.
Following the agenda and following this document. Student number four fifty five expulsion modification to one day in-school suspension and an individualized safety plan. Uh, student C is gonna be student three seventy expulsion modification to ten days out of school suspension and an individualized safety plan reentry. Uh, student D, that's gonna be student number one forty seven expulsion modification, ten days out of school suspension with a board reprimand and an individualized safety plan on reentry. E, student nine thirty six expulsion modification to three days out of school suspension and ongoing counseling as support services and an individualized safety plan on reentry. I, student F, which is student three twelve, expulsion modification to seven days out of school suspension with a board reprimand and an individualized safety plan on reentry. Can I read the whole thing?
And then now we can pull one out.
No, I thought Ms. Lunsing.
The superintendent agreed with each requested modification. In each case, the suspension days already have been served. If approved, board reprimand meetings would be scheduled as soon as possible where applicable, during which additional supportive services for the student may be identified. The board is being asked to approve each of these modification recommendations as being in the best interest of the district and student, and based on a totality of the circumstances, supporting the maintenance of a safe school environment, free of disruptive influences, which can be a distraction to learning, while continuing to hold the student accountable for the student's conduct. If approved, the board also will be authorizing the board president to sign individual resolutions specific to each student disciplinary matter, memorializing the board's decision, and the decision would be, would take effect immediately. Specifics as to the nature of each student's weapons offense, possession or possession and use are not being shared, as doing so could result in the student being identified, when the information is coupled with other information that may be known about the incident. I'm asking for a motion to take these matters collectively unless the board member wants any one of them acted on separately, and authorization of the board president to sign the respective resolutions documenting board action. Okay, if any student is asked to be vote? Who was it, D?
One four seven.
It's student one four seven that we're pulling up. Okay. All right, then. Okay, so then we can vote on the other four together in one, one vote. Okay. So I'm asking for a motion that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's modification of the mandatory one-year period of expulsion for a weapons offense for student four fifty five, three seventy, nine thirty six, and three twelve. Is that correct?
Correct. So moved.
Second.
Motion, okay. Um, today, okay, two days of out-of-school suspension and an individualized safety plan on reentry.
The Riddle.
Okay, so that's, the motion ends then at the end of the.
So there was, there was a motion to take, uh, to approve the modifications as read for students four five five, three seven zero, nine three six, and three one two. And then you'll come back.
Just end it there.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the motion I'm asking for.
That's, I'll make the motion again.
Motion by Mr. Riddle.
Yes.
And second.
Second by Ms. Fabian. Any discussion on that motion?
I'm sorry to see that we are, um, we are being inconsistent with our disciplining of our students.
Any other discussion on the motion, Ms. Fabian?
I just want to thank our principals and our teachers for giving grace when grace is due because again, it is very difficult to, uh, vote on pushing out students, knowing that again, they are children and children will make mistakes. So again, thank you to our principals for looking at everything in totality, um, and giving grace where grace is due.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion on those? Mr. Riddle?
No, I'd like to clarify that too, or just say thank you to them. I think, you know, each person, they're taking each case individually, even though they could just blanket, you know, and use the law against everybody. Um, situations are different, and I appreciate that the care that they're showing in, in the way they do. And, and the board for evaluating and talking about this in closed session, debating what, how we were going to deal with folks.
Thank you, Mr. Riddle. Ms. Lunsing?
Um, I had the privilege of sitting in on one of these board reprimands and just to, um, keep the board aware in speaking with one of these students, it, it was very obvious that a one-year mandatory expulsion was not appropriate. There were just so many layers. Um, and while we need to be aware of the impact of our actions as a board, when we're assessing this, intent is still a factor. And so I'm really appreciative of the team that came together to, to quickly review and advocate for this student's situation, not excusing the behavior, but it was definitely a, a learning moment.
Right. Great.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
No.
Ms. Lunsing?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, now the motion for?
One four seven.
One four seven, that's student D. Um, are we gonna make the same motion?
No, A was being expelled.
Yeah, okay, so the motion, okay, we're just voting on them separately, okay? So we're gonna make the same motion. I'm, okay, can we have, um, everybody's attention here, please? Having too many conversations going on at the same time. I'm asking for a motion that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's modification of the mandatory one-year period of expulsion for a weapons offense for student number one forty seven.
No moved.
Motion by Mr. Riddle.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabian. Any discussion on that motion?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, um, I didn't know that we expelled, um, uh, middle school sixth grader.
This, this is not, this is to modify, this is to modify the expulsion.
And we shouldn't be giving details.
None of these students are being expelled.
Okay.
We cannot, again, we should not be giving any descriptors.
Can, we cannot give any identifiable information on students, please.
Right.
Ms. Lunsing?
Um, so in reviewing the details of the situation, it was of great concern to me. Um, I understand, um, that while it is within our policy to allow for this, the details of the matter are very concerning. So I, I'm torn because I want to vote no, but I will end up passing because it is still in line with board policy. But it's very concerning that this is, um, the situation with this student.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
No.
Ms. Lunsing?
Pass.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez? Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, item twenty-two, board member time. Uh, we're gonna start with our student board members. Ms. Allen?
Hello, uh, I really don't have any closing marks today, but just thank you everyone for staying, and I hope you guys get home safe. Thank you.
Short and sweet. Thank you, Mr. Hakobo.
Um, I also don't have much to say, but just a shout out to Mr. Hamilton and my instructors who helped me try to get this survey out. Um, I really do appreciate their support. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Ms. Hannah?
Um, I don't have much to say except, um, uh, just everybody keep their heads up. Um, staff, just keep doing what you're doing, and you do have support. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Ms. Lunsing?
Uh, I just want to acknowledge that what's happening in our community continues to take a col- or take a toll, um, as ICE is concerned, in my opinion, based on personal stories shared with me. ICE is terrorizing our community. Businesses are seeing major hits as people are afraid to come out and actually purchase even basic needs such as groceries. Our students aren't able to focus on their academics, let alone just be a kid. Uh, with everything that they have going on, their basic needs are threatened, that mental safety is threatened. Um, so my only ask is that we continue to give grace. We do not know what is going on in everyone's mind. We cannot make assumptions. We can't say, oh, they're coming to school, they're okay. Oh, they're getting As, they're okay. We don't know, right? So my ask is we continue to give grace. You support our local businesses here in Waukegan. Stay vigilant in protecting your rights, and to Ms. Allen's point, please stay safe.
Thank you, Ms. Lunsing. Ms. Fabian?
Um, on that note, I will remind everybody, when you see ICE activity, the number to call is eight five five four three five seven six nine three. I suggest everybody program that in their phone, um, because we are seeing a lot of activity. And I will tell you, I am feeling that same sentiment. Obviously, as a Latina, um, I had a situation the other day where I panicked because I saw a vehicle blacked out windows and truck do an immediate U-turn while I'm walking by myself. Um, thank God that it was not ICE. But the fear in that moment is the fear that our children, that our families are feeling. So I understand and, and I, I cannot express enough love thy neighbor, support each other, do what you can do to help one another, and understand, put yourself in someone else's shoes and be a little bit more empathetic. Um, so again, thank you for posting that up. I appreciate you. Um, on that note, it was also very disappointing to see half of the trick-or-treaters come out. Um, this year, I normally get a, a, a nice crowd, um, and I did not. Um, yeah.
Leftover candy.
Yeah, leaves us eating, and it doesn't make us feel good. Um, thank you to Ms. Hannah for suggesting that, uh, we come in costumes and celebration because again, there's a lot of things that various families celebrate, and the fact that half of our families that normally celebrate could not, was very disheartening. Um, and so I thought, uh, it was a great suggestion to come out in costumes so that we can at least lighten the mood, even if it was for a second, because I know we look silly up here. Um, as a, as my bulldog costume is down right now, but I, I know we look silly up here. But again, if only for a minute to lighten the mood, I will take it. Uh, I also want to comment, uh, to clarify what ALAS is. ALAS is the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents. And as a Latina administrator in schools, I was able to attend, um, on behalf of, of ISB. I completely believe in affinity groups, just like we're sending, um, our male, our males to Emsal. Um, affinity groups are great and show great results for many reasons. ALAS for me was super reaffirming and validating in my feelings and in my thought process of what I am seeing happening in my community, and to see it on a national level, and to hear it from other superintendents who are supporting Latino students, feel what I am feeling and validate that, and, and just to affirm that my thought process, I'm not the crazy person going, the world's on fire, um, or the sky is falling, was very beneficial. And there were some great strategies shared that other districts are doing throughout the nation that I hope that we can, um, implement here as well. Um, so when we say that the superintendent was nominated, I, I congratulate her on that because it is a national level. And what was really beautiful about the conference, it's not limited to just Latinos. Um, so it was beautiful to see all the allies come out as well to uplift the Latino voices because we know that this federal administration is specifically attacking Latinos, um, and our black families as well. So we need to, again, unite and unify as a community and support one another, um, as much as we can. I know all of that was very heavy, um, so I'll go back to the other business. Uh, I know, um, several of our admin at the high schools are reminding students to please carry their IDs every single day, especially if you are early release. You will not be released if you don't have that ID. So families, parents, remind your kids if they lost their ID, it's five dollars for a new one, a dollar for a temporary, and those fees add up. a dollar for a temporary, and those fees add up quick. I know, because I've had the feeling. Um, so please make sure that you have your IDs, and that's also for your safety during this time. Um, and the, uh, last note, I just want to leave a thought with our administration. Uh, those students that have been writing in about the food, um, if possible, if they could meet with, uh, Mr. Moten to learn about that process. What does bid process look like? Why are we doing, or why do we have to look at certain parameters, um, to fulfill those federal guidelines and help, and, and for them to give him direct feedback as he's putting together the proposals and presentations of what we should be choosing. So, um, if possible, if we could have our actual staff or our students meet with our staff to learn that process.
Thank you, Ms. Fabian. Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Oh, no, no, let's, uh, Mr. Ramirez. Get all the ladies out of the way.
Hello, and good evening, and thank you, everybody, for always sticking through the very end. Um, it is a very rough time right now, but I would like to remind parents that there are systems in place for help, right? Um, there are places that you can call, um, because we know what's coming down the pipe next week. Um, so I want to remind our families that we do have a wraparound center that you can self-refer yourself to. Uh, we have, uh, counselors and social workers at schools that can refer you out to other places. Communication is key during this time. I know that sometimes it's fearful as a parent to reach out to the school and say you need something, been there, done that, um, but it's important that we get that help that we need. Um, 211 is a tool that, um, I would always push for people to have. Um, you can call and ask for referrals yourself for just about absolutely anything in Lake County that is resource, uh, community resource-based. I'd like to thank our student, um, council members, our student board members, sorry, um, for their effort for the lunch survey, right? We all know that that's always been a topic of contingent, and, um, their effort , um, shows that, um, we, we, we have to get this information. So parents, if your students are at Brookside or at Washington, ask them to fill out the survey. This is the way we get things done. This is the way we get things moving. So there are parents. So si hay padres ahorita que están escuchando, hay una encuesta que sus estudiantes tienen que hacer de la Brookside Hill Washington campus sobre el lonche. Entonces es algo importante para ustedes que sus hijos por favor llenen la encuesta. So please fill that survey out, um, because that's the only way we get the student voice. But thank you, guys, again, for making sure that that voice is included.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Now, Mr. McBride?
I pass.
You're gonna pass? Okay, Mr. Riddle?
Um, yes, I would like to, uh, give a shout out to Principal Kramer and the teachers at Whittier School and, uh, some of the children who turned out for an event that took place last Saturday. And as, as other board members have said, these are very difficult times, but we planted 33 trees in the Whittier School area, neighborhood, um, around that area. Um, and trees, the, uh, that was, uh, compliments of, or because of Open Lands Project. And Open Lands, um, is a, this Chicago-based, um, charity that does a lot of ecological work, including helping communities like ours that, that have a, a, not a really full tree canopy. And the, um, Mr. Rodriguez, who is their, uh, arborist, made the comment that trees are not only provide hope, they, trees are essential to our long-term health and well-being. They clean our air, they reduce stress, they provide shade that cools our communities, and so much more. So, again, thank you to those who helped on that project, and, um, let's do some more next year. Thank you.
That's a different Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes, it's a different, yeah, Mr. Rodriguez.
Right.
Fernando Rodriguez.
All right, um, I just want to thank everybody for, for being here. Um, I really have to make a comment about our student board members, because, um, you know, we have two really fine young men and women here that are participating in the process. They wanted to get involved with this, and I don't know if they knew what they were getting into when they put their name, names in for this, but I think we made a really good choice in the students that we selected. I'm really happy to see the way that they have really gotten into the whole process, and to me, I can already see a change in them. Okay, I think this is an educational process for both of them, because you're learning something. This, this is politics. This is education. There's, there's a lot involved here, and you're learning how things are done, how things get done in government, and this is part of it. And you also see that, you know, the little, little guy can be heard. Okay, that's all of you, and we, all of us, we're just little guys too. All we are is just residents of the city of Waukegan. That's all it is. We just put our names in the hat, and, uh, you know, we're lucky enough to have been selected, but, you know, we're, we're just, we're just people. We're just citizens. We're just people that want to make a difference, and that's why we're here. And you want to make a difference, and that's why you, you're here, and you are making a difference. And, you know, sometimes we sit here and, and sometimes, you know, we have to sit through some negativity. We have people that get up and, uh, make accusations, and you have to listen to stuff they're saying. You're saying, you know, half the stuff they're saying isn't true, and a lot of it is just motivated by hate and ignorance. And, um, you know, sometimes it, I, I used to be really, um, I don't know, I guess I used to take it very seriously before, and it used to really impact me and my, my well-being. You know, somebody would say something about me, and I'd, I'd be feeling depressed for, for the next couple of days, but, you know, when you hear things, when you hear people making accusations and, and charges that, you know, aren't true, you have to take them just for what they are. And, and even if they hurt sometimes, you have to understand that we took a pledge to, to work for our students, to work to make our schools better for our students, and, and to help to improve the whole educational process for our students. And if we have to take some slings and arrows, as they say, people throwing stones at us, well, so be it. It's all part of it. And, you know, I listen to people saying things about me, and I say, wait a minute, who are they talking about? Who, who's that villain that they're talking about, you know? And, and it's kind of funny. You have to laugh it off sometimes, but, I mean, that's all. The unfortunate thing is that, you know, we, we start off in a meeting so positive. Everybody's, uh, positive and enthusiastic, and we come out here wanting to do what's good, and then what happens is a lot of times these comments just kind of take the wind out of our sails, oh, just a little bit, just a little bit. But as you can see, we have some tough board members here, you know, and we're, we're, we're willing to put up with the criticism, the attacks, and who knows? They may see some things that, you know, may, maybe will help us to be better, better people and better board members, you know? They may point out some things that make us do some, some self, you know, soul-searching. So, you know, if we have to endure a little bit of, um, discomfort, it's all part of what we signed up for. So anyway, uh, thank you all for sticking it out this late. We're not finished. We have to go back into closed session, so that I would like to ask for a motion to, um, go out of open session and stand in recess.
No moved.
Motion by Mr. Riddle? Second by Ms. Fabian. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Fabian? Ms. Hannah? Ms. Lenzing?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez? Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. We are now in recess. We are gonna reconvene in five minutes. Oh, yeah, let me say, before we, the reason we're going into closed session, again, exception C1, specific personnel, exception C21, review of closed session minutes, and C5 sale or lease of property. Thank you.